Hey, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled township board supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge of flag to join me. My allegiance to the God of the United States. And to the public for which it stands. I'm an edition under God. Yes. Thanks so much. Meeting agenda says we didn't have any executive sessions for last time. Back for authority.
That is.
The point I'd like to open up firm to communication citizens. And if there's anybody on. The support, please click the raise hand button. We have.
You put that you will in of the attend these.
I don't see any raising raised hands. All right, then we'll. Move on to engineering reports on Diana.
Good evening. I know updates or changes to the. Report submitted. You have any questions?
Do you want to ask your question or do you want me to ask it?
Your question?
Yeah. It's probably not directly what you do, but by the ugly orange, it's the accent color. Oh, thanks.
For the township room?
Yeah.
I will, I will mine out.
Those panels that need to be returned.
They're been, they're on order. Replacements will be here shortly.
Can you get some paint along with that? You've put in a lot of changes that the rest of us agree to.
Did you allow Scott to choose?
So.
I don't remember us thinking a look at colors.
I will take that message back. See what can be done.
So as long to the good talk. So they have techniques to try to just go along. Do you know what the actual color schemes are in or foreign load? What they are called?
I, I know the numbers of them. I know off the top of my head, but there are specific numbers for the.
How about their names to that day?
They're probably pantomcallers.
Yeah.
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 So they're designated by numbers, not by.
Not by. Yeah. Like a paper.
Not that I'm aware of.
Only if it's one of certain special colors.
If they do have some gifts.
Okay.
Any questions on the reason that she's here?
I can't answer.
Thanks. All right, next we have civil engineer John.
Just a real quick update. First of all, on the Mount Zion Commons late last week. Prior to issuing my report, we received a shared parking study. The Mount Zion Commons people went to the zoning hearing board. And provided a couple hours of testimony. Then my review of the shared parking, it seemed very consistent with the I T E. Uh, the residential and I, I thought that their numbers were. Were consistent with what the I T E allows. Uh, they are not done with testimony yet. They are coming back for the next meeting. To. Talk about some other zoning issues and so the zoning hurdle has not been passed as of yet.
Did they answer for anybody who questioned how you get half a car?
Well, no, I, I don't know. I think.
Just curious.
So it's two smart cars.
Or a motorcycle?
Nothing.
Figure.
But two come by kids.
Right.
And the second part is I, I may have this week, we were actually yesterday, we. I think I told you that the at Davies Drive crossing material is obviously railroad tracks and now the contractors. And both the single contractor and the earth movement contract division to move forward. One of the things you want to do is verify that the height that they, that they put the crossing. It's been a three quarters of an inch of where they said it would be. Uh, well, you know, the project's going to move on and. Hopefully we'll see that they're flying out there in the very near future. Any other questions?
Questions, Don? All right, thanks, John. Next, we have our consent agenda. I don't see. A group J, are there any items on here that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
Although you approve consent agenda, I have seen you, Jim.
Second, I have a motion and a second all in favor.
I.
All right, this time with the rest of the board's permission, I would like to move forward the transportation. Program presentation. Uh, let all of you get on early. And we'll take care of the rest of them. Business here.
I heard there's a six inch game.
Without basketball.
Yeah. Uh, good evening for those of you that don't know me. My name is Mike Pritchard. I'm the chief of transportation planning with New York County Planning Commission and New York area. Yeah. We are reaching out to all 72 municipalities in New York County this summer. Talking a little bit about who we are, what we do. What the transportation improvement program is and some opportunities for input, excuse me. Uh, from all of our municipal partners. Um, so supervisors, everybody up here, you have a copy of the presentation. And I did share that with Mark. We'll be able to get that out to you. If you'd like to. Uh, so the same thing, as I said, we'll talk about who we are, what the planning mission is, what we do, what the tip is. What some of your expectations should be if you choose to share some potential projects with us or the set. And so just beginning, very, you know, basic. The county commission has created the county planning commission in 1959. Our mission is to guide sustainable development and preservation to improve quality of life in New York County. So we are a full county. Organization, we are not an apartment of the county, but we are an independent. Uh, organization that makes recommendations to all municipalities in the county. Our team, we are divided into nine divisions. We work on everything from community development to housing, some long range planning. You might be familiar with Pam Schellberger and for liver good in that division. Uh, I shared some information about the heaven mitigation plan, which is also being updated at this point. But my team of five, uh, we focus on transportation planning. So anything that has to do with how people and goods move through New York County, uh, that is, that's what we work on all day every day. So in addition to the county planning commission, which the board of commissioners created, we also oversee what's called New York area metropolitan planning organization. Uh, Penda partnered the MPO in 1964. And we are the decision making body for state and federal transportation funding that flows to New York County. We have five committees that are topical in nature. Uh, we have a transit committee, which is really the worst supervisors for rapid transit. We have a bicycle and pedestrian committee. Uh, we are kicking off here a freight advisory committee dealing with trucks and freight movement through the county. Uh, we, we have a review committee for what's called TASSA, which is the transportation on third set aside. Which deals specifically with bicycle inventory and infrastructure. We also have the technical committee and the coordinating committee. Uh, the technical committee obviously is technical in nature. They deal with the details of projects that come before the MPO. And the coordinating committee is really responsible for all of the fiscal decisions. Uh, and every two years we update what we call the tip, uh, the transportation improvement program. What do we actually produce? Uh, every MPO across the state, there are 23 of us. Uh, we, every MPO produces four key documents. From a long range transportation plan, which is a 20 year plan for the region all the way down to the, the tip, which we're talking about tonight. So the long range transportation plan again is a 20 year plan. Uh, it touches on the policy programs and some of the largest projects for the region. And any processes that you might see there are really planning level lessons. As you go down to the 12 year plan and into the transportation improvement program. The tip is a four year plan. Uh, it includes all projects that will spend any of the dollars that flow through the MPO and their exact. Uh, dollar amounts, they are fiscal, we are fiscally constrained, so in the tip, we can't, uh, you know, spend more money than we have. Some other transportation planning documents that we work on specifically in New York County. Uh, we're, we are wrapping up a bicycle and pedestrian plan, which I know Mark has been involved in. Uh, and we are also, uh, we work on the county bridge plan with the county commissioners. We work on air quality reviews. We were on a whole host of things related to transportation planning. But the primary reason that I'm here and that we're reaching out to all 72 municipalities this summer is really the tip. So in 2023, the 2023 tip. Uh, includes 116 projects throughout New York County. It's four years, as I said, and it represents $192 million investment in county and transportation projects. Typical types of projects that are on the tip. Obviously you've got road maintenance, early maintenance, what we call asset management. But we also work on safety improvements at locations with a high number of crashes. We work on reducing congestion at just intersections and corridors. We work on biking and walking infrastructure, and we also are responsible for oversight of the funding that goes to rapid transit or public transit services. Here in Springfield Township, uh, we have a number of projects that are already on the 2023 tip. Um, there's a maintenance project on Mount Zion Road near Concord Upper Road up to 30. Uh, there's also safety improvements planned for the intersection of Truck Valley Road and 24 Mount Zion Road on this 23 tip. So those are the types of projects. Um, you can see in the presentation, there's a slide about all the different funding programs, all the flavors of. Funding that flow from the federal government and from the state government. And the point there is really that a lot of those programs are, um, we, we need to spend those on specific types of projects. We won't really have flexibility. So for instance. The highway safety improvement program obviously needs to go to safety projects. So there's a pretty extensive cost benefit analysis that we need to run in concert with Penda and get that approved. Uh, at Penda central office for those funds. If you flip then to the next slide, uh, you can see the funding categories and the estimated. Amounts for each of those categories on this 2025 tip, which is what we're kicking off the update to here. So you can see we have about $45 million that will go to bridge maintenance. $11 million for safety, $23, $24 million for its congestion and air quality. And $2 million that has to go towards biking and walking infrastructure. But you can see at the top of that graph. There's about $120 million, which is. Flexible in terms of what the federal government and the state government says. But you'll notice that there's not a specific category for road maintenance. So, uh, there, the vast majority of that money has to go to maintaining the roads throughout the county. But there is some flexibility, uh, on, you know, taking bits of that money and using it towards other types of projects that we talked about. So in total, the 2025 tip will represent about $202 million in investment in New York County. But as we move, you have to our expectations and your expectations, that you do, uh, have tip projects in mind. We want to be really realistic about what our funding actually is here. So you take that $102 million on the 25 tip. You subtract projects that are already planned for the, uh, from the 2023 tip, what we call carryover projects. And in reality, we have about $48 million, uh, over four years. That is available for new projects. Uh, so that $48 million, we have to decide how that gets spent across all 72 municipalities, across all of the roadways, all of the bridges. And all of the other things we might like to do to improve the multimodal networking account. Um, some of the drawbacks that I'm sure many of you were familiar with, but if you do, uh, you know, if you have a tip project that might come out of your municipality. Anytime that you're going to use state or federal funding, the timeline is going to be a little bit longer than if you could do it yourself. Uh, and the cost overall might be a bit higher as well because of some of the additional, uh, regulations and oversight that you have with state or federal funding. But that said, tip projects do tend to be the larger projects, uh, that a municipality doesn't have the funds to do, uh, on, on their own. And thus you're coming to the MPO for, uh, state or federal funds funding. So a little bit about the timeline of this, this tip update. We update the tip every two years. We're at the very beginning of this process, as I said. Over the summer, we're visiting all 72 municipalities to get your, uh, to share this information and to get your input on potential projects. By the end of 2023, we'll have a draft tip, uh, that'll be financially constrained. In January and February, March, my team and the Penda staff run additional analysis of those projects. Putting things like air quality and environmental justice effects. We'll have a formal public comment period, uh, in the April to May timeline of 2024. And then in June of 2024, we need to, um. Approve our local tips so that that can be shared with Penda for what's on the state, state lines. So really what is your role as a municipality as resident, for those of you that might, uh, be watching live or watching later? Uh, what kind of municipality do? Take inventory of your assets. Uh, if you haven't already done so, you know, a lot of our municipalities are doing some great work around this already. But if you haven't already done that, take inventory of the roads, the bridges, um, and, and their conditions. You can identify areas of concern for safety and congestion, um, some areas where you might like to see new sidewalks and new trails. Um, prioritizing and recording those, uh, decisions and those projects in your planning documents. And maybe most importantly, connecting and sharing those ideas with us. That both the planning commission and the MPO. So with that, the last page of the presentation is, uh, some ways to get in touch with me and my staff. Uh, our phone number is on there. That generic email player at Y C P C dot org does go to a real person who monitors that. Make sure it gets to the right person in our office. Um, and you can see there, uh, my staff, uh, as well as Fulcher and Wade, our director and assistant director at, at the county planning commission. So if you have any quick questions that I might be able to answer tonight, I'm happy to take those, but, um, really our intention here is to share this information about the 25. Tip and, uh, and to share our contact information so that you and the staff, uh, can reach out to us over the summer so that we can put together a good list of candidate projects.
I thank you very much for coming to the Springsbury Township early and your tour of all something to discuss about. I do that, just kind of give me a sense of flavor. What is it that you need from the township for us to identify a project? Is it a formal vote? Is it a conversation with our staff?
Yeah, so it's, it's really a conversation with the staff. As we said, you know, it's always helpful, uh, to have any of these projects recorded in a formal document, uh, in the form of, you know, resolution and things along those lines. But really, at the end of the day, um, we, we are looking for, um. Uh, to communicate with staff, uh, and, and to understand the needs from our.
So if we pull that list out right now and make resolution, we don't have to go to the rest of these 70.
We, we could say, we could say. You must have, uh, $48 million worth of projects. I, I understand that you might, uh, but we'll just, yeah, we'll just cut to the chase and we don't have any. We've already gone to about seven, uh, 65, I'd say. So you might be competing some.
Oh, we're late on the.
No, 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 I'm sorry. You've only, I'm foot back. We've only gone to 15. We have 65 left to go. Yeah.
All right, okay. So, so we can still save you some time.
Yeah.
We did have to take the, uh, transportation, you know, which you shouldn't have.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, the second question I have is then, does YAMPO administer the grant requirements when Zach Paul along with the municipality? So if we get a project that springs very funded by federal dollars through the government, who's the grant administrator?
Yes, you have a, uh, you have a contact at Penda who would be, uh, managing, managing any of your ring. So that's correctly us. We have had to go between, between municipalities and Penda.
Like you mentioned, uh, right on your radar is 24 and Drug Valley.
Yeah.
Are you far enough along to know what you're planning for there or just in the beginning stages?
Uh, Penda is currently doing preliminary engineering on that project, so I don't have a design or anything along those lines. Um, I can double check that when I get back to the office. I'm fairly sure that we don't have what it is.
Sure, you. Yeah, the reason I asked, I did have a constituent call me about three weeks ago about that specific intersection. And I wasn't aware it was even.
Yes, I believe we have instruction programs on the tip for 2020. Only 25. Um, so it is, uh, so they're moving through preliminary engineering, we'll go through final design after that. So, um, in the next year or so, I should have, uh, an understanding of what Penda recommends.
It's safe to say it won't be a signal later. It doesn't beat the ones.
I can't, I can't say for sure. I don't know, but, um. I grew up in Springfield Township, up there and that, and just off the top of my head, it doesn't seem like a great location for a traffic signal, but, um, but I don't know for sure what it, if it'd be the one that's happening.
Yeah, McMahon did look at that and talk about some kind of medians there. But it would, it would be tough for a signal which has been requested for many, many years because it's a. It's a terrible level of service, but the, you know, 24 are steep and people are moving pretty quickly. That's a tough one then. Don't think anybody want to tap on that. I, so far I've never seen people saying, yeah, the signal is the best and safest solution for that.
It'd be really nice to stop the big truck cut through traffic to get up to. 83 of the hammock still.
Yeah. The, the only thing I, I did kind of gloss over that I forgot to mention, um, after we do this outreach, any municipalities that have a project on this tip. Um, Penda and, and my staff will be, uh, reaching out to staff at the municipalities to have what's called Penda connects. She might be familiar with where, um, the Penda engineers will, will discuss the specific projects and any other municipal concerns at that location in the chain. So there's, there's always, um, you know, the dialogue there.
Other questions?
Just come true. How do you keep track of all the projects and with like a giant map or something?
We did, yeah, we do. Uh, so the long range plan itself, um, which is on our website, um, you can see. Um, some of the bigger projects for sure. And then internally we get, get a record of, written that, um, we collect from these outreach efforts.
But is there like a grand scheme, like kind of, was it just kind of a scatter shot? How do you? Is that how you choose what?
How do we prioritize? Everything that we do is very data driven, um, especially from an asset management standpoint. Um, we work, uh, side by side with Penda to evaluate, for instance, the sufficiency rating of a bridge. Uh, and we have a extensive. Project selection criteria that, um, is in our long range plan so that when. Um, Penda comes to us with a list of candidate projects, we're running our own local, um, criteria as well. To say, um, yes, these, these line up with each other. And if, if they don't, we do ask for some kind of explanation. At the end of the day, those conversations happen at the MPO meetings, um, where. Those conversations have to be, you know, designed. Any other questions?
Don. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That takes us to communication from the supervisors. Anybody have any?
Just a quick, I, I hit some recently, I feel like it's meeting now in the, uh. Project of 24 Mission Street, or, yeah, Mission Street. And, uh. That's a distance from the National Department Association of Politics. And what they, they conclude, which is really interesting, is there's a certain percentage of department drivers that will use public transportation and not coming in the cars. And there's a certain percentage that will not call. And there's a certain percentage of T cars. And that's how they come up with them. But they are very supportive of the idea that the departments are blocking dramatically from the T cars for the department to someone. It's kind of a national standard. So I thought that was interesting.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Any else? Hey, Charlie, solicitors.
Nothing to add to my written report. Question.
I have a question. Uh, what's actually going on with this, uh, the fire code issues that Yalfer requested with Springer Sperry? I'm not sure what the process is there.
Our code, what's going on with the?
Oh, it's the cross.
It's the process, what's? What's the deal?
First, we started the negotiation or not the negotiation, but the sentence. You hear that, Don, or?
No.
Can you step on the mic?
Yeah.
Bishop, we, uh, we initiated some discussions with township staff, uh, to continue the process that we had already been successful with in the other two townships. We had some preliminary discussions. We pretty much just need to get back in and, uh, continue, uh, working on this situation. Uh, so there's really nothing new to report on that.
So. What has to happen ultimately? This is something that, that the board has to adopt eventually.
When, when. We would end up making a recommendation to the board, yes, sir. Uh, and it would, it would be in the. But as I said, right now, there's nothing new to report.
Okay.
I mean, we'd be looking at the 2018 international fire code.
Correct. Because that's the one that's presently recognized by the Commonwealth.
Spring Garden and Manchester Garden, I've already adopted.
Correct. Right, with some.
Yeah.
Exceptions.
What kinds of things are in that fire code?
Uh, pretty much, uh. It identifies, uh. If you, if you go back in a nutshell, we, uh, when Pennsylvania enacted the United, or yeah, the United Uniform Construction Care. Uh, the return provision to the fire code that applied under, um. From a construction standpoint, but with the fire, with the international fire code adoption would do with, uh. Would, uh, adopt those things that were left out, more or less things that are after, uh, after construction, after, you know, during the operation of a business or. Or a facility that right now we don't have any language to speak to. Uh, there are some things that with, with Springfield, the other two townships didn't have with regard to property maintenance code. Uh, but there's still some things that we can clean up and be consistent with, uh. Uh, issues about, uh, smoke and burning issues. Um, uh, empowering the fire department that when we go out to a restaurant that has faulty equipment. Uh, it, it, it helps us work with the township to make sure that when we leave, they don't turn that equipment back on and go back. Go back to working inside sort of thing. So this is the kind of issue we're trying to work out with, uh, with Charlie and, and manage.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Township managers report.
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to dive into on the. Earlier conversation on the orange sovereign. So do you want me to try to stop? The progress? With?
I guess I'm just, I'm surprised. And I don't think that was the only.
Yeah, I was not exactly enamored with the color. It is very similar to blue or orange marketing color scheme. And I did not know that Township really was a good card for, for property. It's a design building. They kind of looks like. Property. And it's more like their scheme than it is the Springfield Township, which Springfield Township has a brand, whether we like it or not. We have good arms that serve it. So certainly we have some color of the system throughout. Not to say that the color in itself isn't appropriate where it is in the.
Not to say that the color in itself isn't appropriate where it is in the community, but I think that's okay. Uh, I guess the broader question is, I mean, this, how much of this element is holding up recently building? My question.
Oh, it was the original soft it was delivered and was sitting there for months. It was orange. The time. Then when they went to put it up, every panel was damaged in manufacturing. So it had to be reordered. And then it was a thirteen week lead time. So that's why it's not up now. Thirteen weeks will be up in sometime in June. So I don't know that it's in the manufacturing process yet. It may just be in queue to be manufactured. So that's the reason why it's not up. But if the board wants me to see about hitting the pause button, I need to kind of know now so I can go to the general contractor and say, where is the manufacturer? Did they start our panels yet? And if not, let's, we want to hit timeout yet or or what?
So I think it's worth us having that conversation to see if there is an option. Uh I also would hate for us to take a long pause and play the the building.
Custom colors are going to take a while. So I think we're in that queue. So orange was a custom color, like whatever would not be. But and I'm not suggesting wait, and I'm not a color person at all. But we maybe, maybe there, I assume there's a custom line. And those custom orders as that's the thirteen week lead time, standard colors have a separate line. So we may be able to say pause. And if a different color is chosen, that would be a standard color. Or we choose a different color that's a custom color, we may not lose our line place in line.
So that requires a couple of phone calls, but we could give you direction based on that outcome via email.
But I'm not going to be the one select because I'm not a color person.
Right.
Someone tells me, put that, paint that wall, paint, I'm painting, paint. I'm not the one to say, oh, yeah, it looks good there. I'm usually the one that says that's not going to look good. And then after it's done.
Yeah.
That looks pretty good. So.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on this? Anybody care?
Well, it is it isn't this something that is the purview of the architect of the building?
The architect selected the color, yes.
I would be interested in posing the question to the architect, is that a branding color for the architect or for the township? Now, I think that that that, no, we should at least get their input. I don't know if we already have.
And I agree with that. I agree.
Yeah, I wasn't coming at it from that viewpoint, although I think it might be a valid viewpoint, but just that I'm not sure that fits with other colors that that I would describe to the township.
I have no problem asking when you hit pause.
I think we should ask.
Uh that soft it isn't going to prevent us from moving in, right?
No, with that.
Okay.
The police are moving in and soft it's not going to be done. That doesn't, other than aesthetics, it doesn't impact the building whatsoever. Just the settings. It's a haven for birds right now, but.
Is there anything that ugly on the inside?
What?
Is there anything that ugly on the inside?
I don't think. I think well, this color is in the community room. That same orange or roughly that same orange is in the community room, yes. When I first saw it painted again, I'm on powder, I was like, whoa. Now, if I don't have that feeling, I think it looks pretty good.
Numb to it.
It's either numb to it or when it was all put together, it's like, okay, I see this.
Uh but we're not.
But the majority of the colors.
I never thought of that.
They're all neutral. Gray.
By the time this came up at the committee meeting, I was sitting out there doing executives on Humvee Go ready for the final vote for who will put Humvee Go in. And Lori said, I have one last question before we vote. Is there any way you could change that stripe from orange on the road base? He just took me like, oh my God, what was I supposed to say? He said, man, we have it on sixteen stores from coast to coast. It's our color, it's our corporate color. So that was the end of that conversation and they were in the final vote papers. That was the last time orange was in a stock of law.
And so supervisor card, you illustrated the importance of branding.
Absolutely.
Uh for an organization. And so to me, we are making a I guess uninformed shift, uninformed from my perspective, that I don't remember us actually approving this scheme. And so that is going on a statement piece of architecture that is our building, where the public comes and will see it. Um so.
I'm just going to go out alone here and say that nobody here would be in favor of painting a great big orange stripe around the township building.
As far as.
Lori?
I leave those decisions to my wife. Stay healthy with that.
I could read that to my wife and she could call you tomorrow, Mark.
The question is, to Mark's point, what do we replace it with? Now, let's first ascertain where we are in the process. Get the architect's view. And have some old thrones.
Simple thing, easy, the first and relatively easy thing is to find out where we are in line.
Absolutely.
Did they start the panel yet? If they didn't start the panel yet, they're, that's the best case scenario.
Right.
And there's a good possibility that is the case because we were just told today, I just asked today in the project meeting where we're at with those soft it, and I think it was middle of June is the expected shipment. So I would imagine they pump them out pretty quickly once they start. So if they start far ahead, they may have not started June. So that's easy for me to ask the G C to inquire where we.
Let's ask the questions. Then uh if they haven't started yet, let's ask Scott what our options are.
And I'll do both at the same time.
It's suggesting alternative.
Better.
Yeah. More consistent with the spring experience brand to the extent that we have.
Which are brand.
It's black or white, black and red. Yeah. I don't know if there's other other colors that we use within the newsletters. To mind that maybe fitting.
I know, I'm looking at soft colors now, states black is a standard. What he uses is standard, brick red, you're going to go to the red scheme, brick red, uh typically.
All three are intentioned ups.
I'm looking at that flag like that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm looking at the Yonkers Lego. Is that much more fire?
If it's a standard color, it would have been here. So orange was standard, it would have been here already. It's standard color for like five weeks.
If we switch for a standard color, it might actually be faster.
It might, but.
Probably not.
All right, I will inquire and we'll know what I discovered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Anything else for the manager? All right, so then um we'll move on to ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, ending code of ordinances, chapter one oh five, animals to add a new article for E K.
The changes were made as discussed that the last movement ordinance has been advertised or an option.
So I didn't get to read it before, but I'm ready. The one we're going to be voting on tonight. Pretty good to me, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one, the ordinance of ending the code of ordinances, chapter one and five animals to add a new article for E K.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
One coach.
Want to pose?
You only have to keep, I have to keep in mind that you need to, you tend to keep this, you have to amend zoning ordinance definition. Agriculture is. Is it includes any? So that little fix that you need to make.
It's just stuff for that to be done with.
Like, because it's a zoning ordinance, you got to do the right, got to do the zoning process. It's why I didn't include it in this ordinance. We'd have to send it off, planning, mission, I think here. So if there's some other changes we make, I don't know for an appropriate intent, there's some other changes we need to make to the zoning ordinance, maybe. Put it together.
Can we wait until the plan? Because that's part of the, there's that too far in the future.
Um, I'll have to, I'll talk. And my only concern there is that technically we still have this definition, apiary unit for agriculture, that's only allowed in the R R. This ordinance somehow said any. So I want to say we're going to have issues, so right now it's a little bit of a conflict, but I don't know if we want to wait.
Yeah, because that'll be another.
Year or two, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll figure something.
All right, we're not into old business.
Mr. Chairman, if if I could, I'd like to talk about I M A. Um, we, a couple of meetings ago, the the board directed me to reach out to Spring Garden and and see if we could have a trail discussion between the two townships separate than the Yalfer guidance or government's discussion. So I did reach out to Spring Garden Township's manager. They have two of their commission members that want to be on, have this discussion. And my question to this board is, it may be easier to have two members, one or two members from this board in this discussion, so we don't have special work sessions and that kind of harratoning thing. And wanted to see if this board agreed with that, and if so, if I would have anybody volunteer for, say, discussions.
Um generally agreeable with that, but I think that uh we ought to have some consensus of for this to work the right. We think we can go with this before we engage in those discussions. I can be either at this meeting or at a at a meeting that would happen before the get together with those townships.
Would it make sense to have a meeting, uh like this work group meeting to kind of get the feel of what the potential is? Then come back and report to the whole board that this is kind of what the potential is. I I don't know, just a thought.
So let me ask you this, uh in your conversation with the manager, it has an agenda been set with this?
No, how this started is, this is called revolving around I eighty-three widely. And Spring Garden Township commissioners or at least some of their commissioners thought it would be a good idea to have a bike walking trail from behind Victory Fire Company generally in that area. It would follow Mill Creek up to and be able to connect to the Heritage Rail Trail parking lot on Lox Mill Road right off of Route Thirty. And the majority of that trail, if it was going to happen with her in our township, because it the pathway would be our right of way that follows our sewer line in that same path. So that's what had happened. There was a meeting with Penn Dot, which I was invited to, it was a Zoom meeting to see if Penn Dot would be amenable to something like that, and Penn Dot was. And so that's where it kind of kicked off from. And what I see is the biggest stumbling block on the whole thing is I think it's relatively easy until we get behind Jack Jim Volvo GMC. Then how are we getting that last little bit, which would be over the railroad tracks, which will never, that will never help. Or get out to Route Thirty and and get up to Lox Mill Road to where you can turn that. That's the biggest stumbling block that I see. But the overall concept, I think, is a good one. And we talked about there could be a spur off a bit that would go under I eighty-three over to North Hill Road right near where Runners is right now. So then that neighborhood would be able to get access to it. So I I see a lot of positives to it. But it's kind of out of our specialty too. It's more of a rail trail type of specialty. And maybe they get involved at some point afterwards, but I think initially that's what this discussion would be centered around.
Do they have any expectations of what this meeting would generate?
I think just, I took it was more along the lines of ideas and thoughts. If Spring Sperry was interested, Spring Sperry was a flat node and it almost kind of dies because like I said, the majority of it or two thirds of it would be in our this power. But if Springsberry wasn't a hard node, then I think from there, we could go with how would this look, who needs to be involved? The one cycle.
And is it on our side of eighty-three or the other side of eighty-three?
It would be on the Spring Garden side of eighty-three, that the majority of that pathway
Still on us.
Is still in a re and I say that now, I don't know what it'll be, may relocate because I, Penn Dot is relocating Mill Creek to the south to towards the city. So I don't know where the boundary is going to be at that time.
That's interesting because only if the creek moves naturally, that's a municipal boundary or state boundary move with it. Studied a little bit from prep board, because they're artificially moving it, I think.
We keep the same line.
Keeps the same line. It would be like moving the Mississippi River artificially to a box forward. It, the line remains where it was. That makes it a little more screwed up.
So they'll have territory on this side of the beach then?
Yes.
Yes. And that happens with Spring Garden, with York City. And that happens with Spring Garden, with New York City.
Yeah, New York City.
City will get involved in that because our division line between us and New York City, if we get towards the end of City, we run Everts.
Granted, Botman's. So conceivably, and we didn't, so to your point, we don't know how much of a strip Spring Garden is going to have on our side of.
Correct. Pendot seems amenable to the, this thought. And I, I will stop there as far as that. They didn't think it was a good idea, but they didn't think it was a bad idea. They thought that it would not good merit to look at this for.
Well, and I, I agree that from our point of view, we should at least start looking at it, look at it a little, I mean, there's no harm in that. We're not committing to anything other than having a discussion.
So it could conceivably be a joint project there essentially around that curve. Comes back to Graham Street. Then the Everts. And I'm presuming they'd be way underneath three, get them all the way into existing round trip, if you can connect there at the existing round trail. Yeah. I don't know how you access it, though, you have the direction, the railroad press.
You're definitely not going to be.
Yeah.
We've just been.
And from that.
Yes. We have bikes still cause. Yeah, um, you almost would have to loop it there in that Graham Street area. At the end of your trail.
And I think that's further down the road a little bit. I think initially we kind of just need to talk it over with the two municipalities. To see if it's at least worth kicking a can and seeing where this could go. But there is there is a pathway, a potential pathway under eighty-three that's going to remain that would bring the spur, bring a potential spur right out aside where Runners is and most of.
And bikers could just cross the tracks right there. Because there's not a lot of traffic right there at all. I, I think it's worthy of discussion, but I think one of the other expert issues we had, lots of little things, especially on some of our.
Okay, yeah, I agree that, but if that's some meetings, we always let's not hold up this potential while we're waiting.
Because we're gonna have to move fast on this. What?
Pendot kind of needs to know, and I don't think Pendot is going to do a lot of work as far as physical work here. I'm sure there'll be some. It's going to be more about when the right of ways and all that legal language. Because the, this access road has to remain so we can access our sewer line. The utility, other utilities can access the power lines and such, so this roadway is going to be there. I think it's a sense of that legal stuff if we're going to so they can start incorporating.
Far below the railroad tracks is Mill Creek go.
I'm sure I understand.
Mill Creek crosses the railroad tracks.
Yeah, keep Mill Creek goes on way.
Mill Creek goes under the railroad tracks right at our pump station.
And how much room is there?
It's not a big waterway opening.
And the tracks in that motivation, there's several, like six, seven sets of tracks.
That shows three. One under the railroad tracks. Eighty-three is I'm here. Safe. You look at.
Right, where were you?
Well, that's an issue too. I was looking how we get to the terminals of, uh, uh, the Heritage Rail Trail up there.
Now, sorry, if you're running on this side, yeah.
Following Mill Creek. You're going underneath.
These tracks here.
You sense the tracks there.
Yeah.
I think that's where you're.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, there's another location where we're going across the railway tracks.
Well, this would be under. Creek's below that.
There's another right off of market.
Yeah, but what John was saying is that's not there's, there's not a lot of height there.
Can we dredge everything that is out here in the creek, put it back in, back with enough money, it's forty-eight million dollars for you.
Yeah.
Let's hear, let's hear what their thoughts are. Maybe, maybe we have balloon rounds one side or the other or something.
Both as trail project, a lot of time here for grand funding and just like all the rail trail.
You got three lanes or three.
Thought they were gonna punch this through, cross the Mill Creek and, and were they gonna cross to the other side of, uh, Doris?
It's still, this goes all the way into the city.
Where is that?
It's the thirty bridge.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like single lane, bike lane, like a five footer hanging off the edge of the bridge.
Down the south side. Is
you can't, two bikes passing at the same time.
You have to look ahead, what's coming the other way. But it's top coming, it is coming from the city out. Definitely what's in first.
All right. Hear what they have to say first, then have a work session or have a work session and then hear what they have to say.
Does anyone want to join me from the board?
I'm happy to, Mark.
Tom's looking the other way, Bob's looking the other way.
I think it's about time for some of our others to get to know their spring garden.
Well, that is true. That is true.
We're very familiar with.
And that. When you think this is gonna happen?
Sooner than later. Uh, I know that's a vague answer, but I think, and we can't wait too long, they'll at least give some direction. So I think this meeting would be next several weeks.
Time of day preference?
I think that's pretty wide.
Sticking out, I can't help but think would there be value to having someone from the rail trail authority who's done these projects at the.
Yeah.
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 Guidance.
As I said, that's their specialty, not really ours.
Right.
That's probably double every issue. If you haven't thought of.
Good, good thought.
Yep.
As we have not railing.
Okay, so why don't you include the three of us in the, in that discussion and then cover two to make it.
Okay.
Go that way, that, all right, Charles?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Where are we? Okay, yeah, we are. Uh, traffic calming. Do you want to say anything more about that? Mark, you talked about that at the last meeting.
I did talk about that at the last meeting and the, um, Danny came to me with, um, because we have to buy more speed hubs, so we had that discussion. Um, I don't know the status of when they'll be here. The additional speed. Um, so we'll do the speed hubs and then all the one-way signage and the do not enter. Then I have to get Charlie on that because I don't have to be in order, so reinforce.
And Mike help us out with the sidewalks up there.
That can certainly be something that we put on our list.
And so what does that last thing you said?
Mike, Richard. From the.
Yeah, transportation.
From the transportation plan, I just heard. If, uh, if we get some help with, uh, Lemon Avenue White Road and potentially the stormwater issues as well. Sidewalks, better road conditions. Probably keep some of the kids off the street and make it less likely that there, there'd be a danger. Anything else with American Rescue Plan to discuss right now?
All right.
Um, we got strategic planning coming up.
That's our strategic plan that we already adopted. The call plan.
Call plan.
Is steering committees been a few times and they've had very good meetings.
Now, I'm talking about, I mean, don't we refresh our strategic plan to, uh, keep looking forward and, uh, and what our capital improvement plan looks like uh, leading into our budget.
You do.
That would be able to do the next one. All right. Anything, anybody wants to talk about on any of these? You had the presentation, anything else?
Your turn.